Meeting is in order. You going to call the roll table?
Sure.
Mr. Director?
Mr. Sirianni.
Here.
Mr. Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Any comments, amendments, corrections?
Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Comments, correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience on items not in the agenda, so these are specifically if you want to address the commission on an item not on the agenda, this is your moment to approach the podium and we'd like to hear from you. Seeing no member of the audience approaching the podium, we'll move on to unfinished business.
No unfinished business, Mr. Chairman.
Then we'll proceed to the main event, then new business.
We do a staff, pre-staff presentation first usually.
Right. So we're going to have a public hearing first, we'll hear from the staff on rezoning application 3957 hyphen 2023, rezoning of parcels to industrial district code M2 with proffers. Mr. Hoppe?
Can I interrupt for one minute? Can we turn one of these screens so that, I know last time there was difficulty for folks to see. Thank you. You can still read it right.
Mr. Chairman, due to the circumstances of who I work for, I must recuse myself from deliberations in voting.
Mr. Flanagan, I hear that with regret, but I understand it and I have immense respect for your sense of responsibility in this matter. Thank you.
Not ready to retire yet.
Very good. That would be a big loss indeed. Mr. Hoppe, would you like to proceed?
Certainly. I'm just going to be doing a brief verbal summary of the changes that have occurred since the public hearing that we held last month. The applicant has proposed essentially five changes that are outlined within the proffer statement. The first is the limitation on the height of the two buildings closest to East Chandler Street. They have been limited from the 70 feet that is outlining the code down to 45 feet, so they are reducing the height of those buildings. They are also proposing to reduce the maximum height of the remaining buildings from the 70 feet permitted by code down to 65 feet. In addition to those limitations, they are proposing to limit the accessory structures on top of these buildings, which in our current code have no height restriction, to 10 feet. And the fourth change that they have proposed is the addition of a variety of plantings adjacent to the National Cemetery in addition to the buffer screening that they have there to provide some seasonal color along that perimeter of their property. And then the final change is the reclassification of their definition of daytime to match up with the town code as it was outlined or pointed out at the prior meeting that that definition differed from what we had in our code, so they've made it consistent in that respect. I believe that the applicant does have a presentation that provides some visual aids to help show representations of what these changes mean as far as the plan itself goes, but these are unproffered visual aids and so did not want to include them in the report itself.
Since we have a pretty full audience, would you mind explaining very briefly what unproffered means?
Certainly. In a rezoning application, an applicant may proffer certain conditions. These are commitments to the town of things that they will do to mitigate the impact of their development. In this instance, the applicant has proffers related to screening, they have proffers related to the height of their building, which has a relation to visual impacts, they have proffers related to noise specifications that are more restrictive than the town standards, they have proffers of cash commitments to the town for impacts to such things as the loss of pervious surfaces, the loss of tree cover, canopy cover, things of that nature. So these are, in general terms, the proffers are commitments that the applicant makes of their own volition to the town to offset impacts of their development.
Question on that? On the proffers, if the current applicant sells the property, do the proffers go along to the new owner?
Correct. The proffers run with the land.
Okay. So they have to be done no matter what?
Correct. Correct. The only way to amend the proffers is to come back through the public hearing process.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're going to proceed to a public meeting. At the last, it's a July meeting where we also discussed this subject. I read a memo, again because we had many members of the audience for whom this is not an everyday procedure, but it's a new unfamiliar proceeding, I don't want to read the whole memo again, it's rather lengthy, I just want to make a couple of key points. This is a multi-step process, a zoning application, our responsibility here is to take in as much information as we can and make a recommendation to the town council to approve the rezoning application or to decline it. Ultimately, it's the town council that makes that decision and they may overrule us whatever we recommend, the council may feel it has better information or a better understanding and overrule us. There's a little preamble to the public hearing which I'm going to read just to make sure everybody's on the same page here, that we're focused and we work together in the best possible manner. This is a public hearing to allow the commission to gather information from interested citizens on the agenda items. Citizens may speak in reference to each item on the agenda for a time usually limited to three minutes. Commissioners and staff may ask questions of anyone attending the hearing. Speakers are asked not to direct questions or comments to each other. Speakers are not allowed additional time for rebuttal. This is a hearing, not a debate. Questions may be directed to the commissioners and the community development staff during office hours. So just to emphasize, please don't speak to each other, speak to us. We are not in a good position to answer specific questions, the best way to do that is to approach us outside of the meeting or to approach the department during office hours. And I thank you for your attendance and for your interest and for your understanding. And with that, the public meeting is open. The applicant, are you going to kick us off here? Typically, we'll have a presentation from the applicant, we'll hear from the public in general. As noted, three minutes per individual, if you're representing a group or an association, usually four minutes. Afterwards, the applicant will have a chance to respond in a factual manner to any factual information raised by members of the public not already addressed in the existing application in proffer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Back to see you again from our last time we met.
I'm sorry to be fussy, but could you just say your name?
Stephen Plesko for the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said that, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Beg your pardon.
So we're back with some changes as Andrew has summarized, you know, very briefly. I'll take a little deeper dive into those just so we're all clear and hopefully it helps the public and y'all in your decision-making process with more information. So we've got our PowerPoint here. So again, our case is a little bit different than the previous data center case with the Peterson Group that was directly to the south of us. They're a little more remote, they don't have as many neighbors as we do. We have the National Cemetery, we have Mountain Brook across the street, and some industrial with the town electrical substation and plant close by us. So our case is different. We have to look at site-specific characteristics and how are we responsive to that? And that's been, that's been the basis for how we've done our design since day one. So the three key planning issues, and again, this is repetition from previous presentations, but it has directed how we've designed our site to try and minimize the impacts on our neighbors. Number one, respect the setting and the solemnity of the new U.S. National Cemetery. Number two, provide suitable setback and buffering to Mountain Brook Estates. And number three, address potential noise issues. And as Andrew pointed out and Mr. Sirianni asked, we are trying to come up with proffers that give you the best definition of what we think the project is going to look like and what the constraints are. The ultimate, final, final design is not set. We do proffer a conceptual development plan that shows the number of buildings, heights, general locations. We are allowed in the final engineering to make minor revisions to that layout based on final engineering, but as best we can, we're presenting what we think the project's going to look like, how many buildings, how big they are, where they're going to be, what the setbacks are. So based on that and based on the feedback that we got at the last meeting with the public hearing, we listened to the public, we listened to comments from the Planning Commission, and we made the changes that Andrew outlined. So I'd like to go over those kind of in reverse order from our priorities, but no less important, you know, just in the sequencing of them. So number three, noise issues. Major issue, we have already committed to the most stringent noise standards in this area. We are setting noise standards for this project lower than the county, and we are setting standards that are lower than current town ordinances. And one of the comments we got in, from Planning Commission, was making sure that our noise ordinance that we're imposing on ourselves also coordinates with the town standard code noise ordinance. And the one delta that the chairman pointed out is our definition of daytime versus nighttime was in conflict with I think section 13 of the town code. So we have amended our proffers, and this is the highlighted section that you have in your proffer package. We amended our proffer number 27 subsection A3 to make our definition read the exact same as it is in the town ordinance. So daytime will be the same for us as it will be for the rest of the town.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Could you go back? You say unless otherwise specified. Where does it get specified?
If the town changes their definition of daytime, then our definition would change. That's how we interpret that.
I feel more comfortable with those words we're in there. Unless otherwise specified. I don't know. It's, you got a definite, these are the hours and everything, unless otherwise specified. Somewhere on page 45. Oh, by the way, we're going to do this. I mean, not saying that you will, but.
If, if, if that's a recommendation, we're happy to live with that if, if Andrew, if you feel that's appropriate.
What does anybody else think?
If I may, I thought we discussed that there were sometimes circumstances that would fall outside of that, if there was emergencies or some other reason that the noise would have to.
Gotcha.
Right? Am I remembering that correctly, that there could be circumstances where noise would?
There are still exemptions to their proffered noise conditions. I believe there's seven, six or seven different ones that have not changed from the prior ones, so essentially if there's emergency vehicles, if there's construction, if there's the power outage where they need to run the generators, those are all the different ones that exempt them from these standards.
So is that what we're meaning when we say otherwise specified?
This is where I was just looking to see, because I believe the language is specific to, it's pulled directly from our code, and so that's why I'm just looking to see what are some of the examples, and I think it may be largely a residual language section that does not actually reference anything anymore, because I don't.
It'd be better if we say unless otherwise specified by town code? Because otherwise specified, they can make a change.
True. I mean, this one could simply read the daytime shall match the terms of the town's definition of daytime.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
In section 13 of the town code.
Sure. No, that's fine, we're very, I mean, that's the intent, and, you know, happy to.
Understand.
To make that adjustment, and you certainly can offer that as a condition of the approval. We can't change the proffers right now, but you can do that.
Okay. I thought, sorry, I thought there's been some effort to address the emergency exemption for, you know, power supply, since that seems to be one of the chief noise concerns, that, you know, if the power supply falls short, the running of generators during that situation that is a source of disruptive noise. And I thought the code allows that as an exemption, right?
No, the, at all times, this project is subject to the regulations of chapter 13, which is the town's noise ordinance. Proffers are directly related to the zoning, which is chapter 27.
Okay.
So at all times, they're going to be required to meet the standards of the town's noise ordinance. What they have proposed are essentially restrictions that are above and beyond the town's noise ordinance that will be in effect the majority of the time. They have carved out certain exemptions, but even during those exemptions, they'll have to meet the town's minimum standards.
The town's minimum standard doesn't allow exceeding the basic noise level for the emergency defined as power supply?
Town's basic noise one does not address those emergency-type situations, so.
So that is not an exemption under the town's.
Correct.
So that's how it's addressed? Thank you. Mr. Plesko, sorry.
Oh, no, no, we, again, we want clarity and want transparency, so. Okay. Number two, provide a suitable setback and buffering to Mountain Brook Estates. So as Andrew has mentioned, under the current M2 zoning ordinance, which we're going to fall under, you can have buildings up to 70 feet tall, and then you can have parapet screening above and beyond that, and it's not really defined in our current M2 ordinance. So it's a little bit of a mystery of how high could these buildings really be? And responding to comments that we received from some of our neighbors at Mountain Brook, we thought it very important to give more specificity to how tall and how big these buildings are going to be. So for the two buildings that are going to be along East Chandler, we're going to go from 70 to 45, and all the other buildings, the other four buildings, we're going to go from 70 to 65. And then for the parapits, we're going to define that the parapet height is going to be a maximum of 10 feet. So that gives us a maximum height for all these buildings. And we thought that was very important to make sure, you know, we all understood that. And back from our, you know, five months ago when we started this and we were doing our work sessions with the cross-sections to accurately be able to depict what these are going to look like, we had to do our grading plan, which we've done, and then we cut 10 different cross-sections through the site. And now we can show, you know, and it's one of the things I'll do for you tonight, is show you how these changes have affected, these reductions in height affect some of those view cross-sections. So on this diagram, this is our site plan, and the two blue buildings closest to East Chandler are the two that are going to have the lower height of 45. The other four buildings will be a maximum of 65. And then you can see these are, again, repeating a little bit of some of the previous work, these are the 10 different cross-sections that we cut with the different key views from Mountain Brook and from the National Cemetery. Also, just want to point out on this diagram, the electrical substation is shown in pink, and that's south of the National Cemetery. It's the closest thing that we're building that's to the National Cemetery, but it's also the smallest in height. And also just to point out, since we've got this diagram up, today, the closest burial area of the National Cemetery is 250 feet away from the town's substation. On our project, the closest point our electrical substation will be to a burial area is 250. So it will be the same distance away from, from, from the burial area as the current town's substation is, just at the closest point. And you can see as you move to the west, it actually gets bigger. So at a very closest point where the same actually gets bigger, probably another 100 feet as you go towards, towards the west property line. And this is how we've documented it in the proffer, as Andrew pointed out. We've revised proffers eight and nine to specifically limit the height of the two buildings in East Chandler to 45, all the other buildings 65. The little diagram on the right, sorry, it's a little hard to read, it's a little smaller scale, but it just shows how we measure these different elements. So the A dimension is the building height, so from the finished grade at the building to the top of the front of the building, that's your maximum height, it's either going to be 45 or 65. Then the parapet is the, what we're going to use to screen the rooftop mechanical equipment, maximum of 10 feet high. And then for the north, let me get this right, let me read it right here, for the western, northern, and eastern-facing portions of each building, we will set back that parapet wall from the face of the building 10 feet, minimum of 10 feet. We're leaving it on the south side because those are the faces that are away from any view sheds, and so we'll push, if we have rooftop equipment, it lets us put it further away from folks. So again, documented in the proffer, this is what you're going to get. If we don't develop it, or if we get a joint venture partner to help us develop it, these are our rules that we have to live by. We cannot change this. And we hope by doing this, again, we're trying to give more clarity to what you're going to see ultimately out there. So we revised all 10 cross-sections, and we'll try and run through the key ones quickly. This first cross-section is the one that goes from the social, the social, social worker office building across the street, the one that's got the solar panels in their parking lot. Their building is 820 feet from our closest building. So on the cross-section, we've kind of colorized it a bit to help with some of the clarity. On the left-hand side is a view of that building, cross-section of the building, we took views from the second floor of that building, it's second, it's two-story building, and you can see how far it is from our closest building, which would be building number six. And we've shown two areas where we're putting vegetated buffers. There's an area close to East Chandler, we've got a little room between the right, the V-Doc, the town right-of-way for East Chandler and our Virginia Power overhead transmission line. We've got some area in there where we can put some vegetated planting, and then closer to our building, we've got another area of vegetated planting. Day one, if you're on East Chandler driving, even with our initial plantings, you will not be able to see the building. Further back from the social workers' building, over time, as the buffer that's closest to East Chandler grows, it will block the building. So you'll get 100% coverage of that building.
Mr. Plesko?
Yes.
That building, buildings number five and six are all, in addition, they're the phase three buildings, right?
Correct.
They'll be the last ones to be built, is that right?
Correct. Again, we're trying to be conservative, we're trying to show worst case. Is it possible that we get a partner or we sell to someone who says, "I'm going to build all six buildings at once"? Can't tell you. If that happens, I think that's great. But the other thing to point out is, in our phasing plan, which is also included in the proffers, we show this as being phase three, but we also agree in phase one to plant all of our perimeter buffers. That happens in phase one. We have to masquerade the site to get it all ready. We're going to have all our berm's built, we're going to go ahead and plant it day one. So if it truly goes in multiple phases, these will be the last buildings built, and the buffers will have the most time to mature. Okay. This is cross-section number two, which to me on East Chandler is the most important cross-section, because this is the one that is at the closest house in Mountain Brook to our property. So it's about 450 feet over a football field away from that closest house to, to our property line, or to our first building, sorry. And so on the diagram, you can see how the reduction in the building height is pretty dramatic, going from 70 to 45. And we've cut the cross-section, it's shown there in orange on the left, out of, taking a view out of the second floor, they're two-story houses, and so we've taken a view out of the highest livable point, second floor, and again, also showing what happens with someone driving in that area along East Chandler. If you look out at the house, if the closest building, building six, was built in the very first phase, you would see probably half the building. But as the buffers that are along East Chandler that we're going to plant and closer to the building grow, over time, you will not see anything from that location. This was the rendering that we did before in our previous presentation, and these show the buildings, the two buildings closest in East Chandler at 70 feet tall. This is what we showed you before, and with the new reduction to 45 feet, they virtually disappear. The next cross-section is from a house that's further back on Kings Brook, the road into Mountain Brook. And recall that when we showed you the grading plan, that road goes down in elevation, so the houses that go, that are further back are lower in elevation, so they're looking up a little higher. There's also a pretty substantial row of trees behind all those houses. We have not included that as screening to be conservative. Some of the trees are deciduous, so to be conservative, we assume they weren't there. Again, we took a view from the second floor of one of the houses, we picked one that was 675 feet away, and same thing. If all the buildings were built in the first phase, you would probably see about half of that building that's closest. However, over time, the screening's going to be effective, and it's going to block those buildings. The next cross-section is number four, and this is from, taken from East Chandler at a point kind of at the edge of where the end of building five is, and we cut it so we could show all of our buildings, kind of a cross-section through the middle of the site. So the first building you see is building five, then building three, and then building one. And the colors show the reduction in building five, how it's lowered. And then for buildings three and one, shown the dark blue that shows the 65-foot height limitation, and then the 10-foot parapet. So those are accurate heights that you'll have, and this is based on the grading plan that we presented to you, you know, that, so to give you more accuracy in the cross-sections. From day one, along, driving along East Chandler with the initial planting, you won't be able to see the closest building. And as those grow, again, 100% coverage. The next cross-section is the one that goes right down the middle, it's kind of to the far left, it's not highlighted, but goes down the middle of the site, kind of through where the cattle stream goes today, it's the low point of the site in, this low point of East Chandler, so you're kind of looking up from that low point. And this section cuts through our proposed stormwater management pond. We can't do a lot of vegetative screening on the stormwater management pond because it's a built-up embankment, and you're not supposed to plant on those. But we are going to put planting closer to, you know, to building number five. We'll never be able to fully 100% screen that building that's furthest away, which would be building number one. And again, just so it's clear, it's this cross-section here. But it's that cross-section here. So the building that you see is building number one, which would be the first building built. And however, the distance for that building is over 1,300 square, 1,300 feet away. And it's only at that low point when you're driving along East Chandler that you would possibly see that. As you go further up, the other landscape screening. As you go further up, the other landscape screening becomes more effective. So again, just trying to, you know, to be transparent on that one. The next cross-section, so the next topic is the National Cemetery. And as we said from day one, when we've met with you at the work sessions, this is our top priority, to buffer and appropriately screen the National Cemetery. When the town council put the technology overlay district on our property, they included a minimum hundred-foot buffer around the perimeter of the National Cemetery. We have respected that and actually gone much, much further as far as setback and vegetated buffer than the hundred feet. So the comments that we got at the last public hearing, there was a comment from, uh, I can't remember her title, from the American Legion, and I apologize if she's here.
Commander.
Commander, sorry, ma'am. Uh, about the visual aspect of the buffer. So this is at Flagpole Hill on the National Cemetery, this is looking towards the town's, uh, power substation.
That's, yeah, that's the power, that's the substation.
It's the town's substation.
Existing, visible as it is right now.
Correct, correct. And the comment was, "Well, it looks just like a green wall." And so we've heard that, we've taken that into account. Um, I will point out that National Cemetery has done no other permit or buffering on their own. If you drive by today on East Chandler, there's a black chain-link fence with no, no buffering provided by the National Cemetery. This is just a closer look at the existing buffer. We think it's very effective and very important. We want to keep that, and we're proffered to commit and keep that. But what we wanna do to respond to the commentary, and again, helping with the solemnity and the visual aspects of, of being, surrounding the National Cemetery on two sides, is let's enhance the view, let's add some more diversity of plant materials. Let's see if we can introduce some seasonal color to make it more attractive and more park-like. So we've added this proffer where we're going to add various plant materials. Large shade trees, one large shade tree every forty feet on center. Initial planting size, two-and-a-half-inch caliper. And these match a lot of the plant, the planting buffer standards in the current town, uh, land development ordinance. Also, medium shade trees, one at every twenty-five feet center. These are all in addition to the double row of evergreens, which we're still gonna keep. So these are more plants. We're also gonna add ornamental or flowering trees, one at every twenty-five feet at center. And some people might say, "Wow, that seems a, a pretty spread out." Not really, when you look at the size of those, when they grow and mature. Plus, we're gonna add shade, tall shade trees, medium shade trees, flowering trees, and then also deciduous flowering shrubs. We'll do them in groupings, we'll do equivalent of one shrub every five feet. We'll try and cluster them. When we bring in our first site plan, we're gonna do a detailed buffer plan. That'll be approved by, by the town planning staff, and we'll get our landscape architect to do that. So it'll have more rhythm than just an engineer laying them out every twenty-five feet, and try and be a little more aesthetic. All the plant materials will be as provided for from the list that's in the town subdivision ordinance. There's a list of approved plant materials, native species, that do well in this area. We also added a proffer number twenty-three. Again, trying to make sure that we do a good job with the buffer, where it's our responsibility to maintain the vegetated buffers, fertilize them, water them, prune them per industry standards, and replace any unhealthy or dead plant materials in a timely manner. Again, trying to respect the National Cemetery and make sure that it looks good all the time. This is the view, just for those who might not have been out there lately. This is the view at the main entrance, uh, closer to the railroad tracks. They have a little bit of veg, a little bit of flowering vegetation, um, there, but, uh, and then looking across the street, there's no vegetated buffer on the, on the side to the old cemetery. Our goal is to provide a continuous buffer, so you won't see anything, you know, from our site, cars, buildings, that's our goal. This is the view looking to the mountains. And it's nice that in the National Cemetery, they also have some other plant materials and different trees and stuff, makes it look more park-like. That's our inspiration, to make it look more park-like around our perimeter, on our side. And so we updated the cross-sections, again, for two reasons. One, to show you where we would like to do this enhanced planting, and also show you the impact of reducing the building height of the two buildings along East Chandler. So we had cut five sections from the National Cemetery view. The first section is at a point, it's the closest burial area, it's north of the service area that's at the National Cemetery. Our closest building's about nine-hundred feet away. The second cross-section is at Flagpole Circle, which we think is the critical cross-section, because it's the highest point elevation-wise at the National Cemetery. So if you're gonna see it, it's gonna be from Flagpole Circle. The next two sections are further down, and they're cut through the service area. We wanted to cut, cut those sections just to see how it would look if someday in the future the National Cemetery might decide to close those or move those. Today, there is a vegetated buffer. If you're, if you've been out there, you know where the columbaria is. There is an existing vegetative, mature vegetated buffer that buffers their service yard. They also have their, their office building, maintenance office building there, and they have a big, you know, two-story barn for equipment. That's, that's what we'll be seeing from our side in that direction today, that's what we see today. There's no screening today from the National Cemetery. But important is just to see those for perspective. And then probably the other most important cross-section is the one that's cut to the south, that goes, there's the little, uh, shelter where the funeral stage, and a lot of people gather there. And that's another height point, it's the highest point in that part of the, southern part of the, the property there. And so we wanted to cut a cross-section from there, looking south towards our electrical substation. Again, that's the closest thing that we're building that's vertical. We wanted to make sure that that view was addressed. The dark green areas are the areas that we would propose to do this enhanced planting. We don't think we need to do enhanced planting behind the service yard. So that's our, our request is, we'll put, put the planting where it's gonna be seen visually. So this is the first cross-section, number six. And again, this is at the low point in the burial area, it's north of their service area. We're nine-hundred feet from building five, which would be built in phase-three. We're doing an enhanced buffer right at the property line. So we've got enough room, the ground falls off from Flagpole Circle down. So we're putting a berm as close as we can to our common property line. We think we can get a six-to-eight-foot-high berm in there, plant that with the two rows of evergreens, plus the enhanced plantings. So day one, just with the initial plantings, measured from a person height in that one burial area, you won't see our closest building, building five. And then it gets better, as the vegetation matures, it's even more screened. Number seven is Flagpole Circle cross-section. Again, we think it's the most important cross-section on this side of, of our border with the National Cemetery. Our closest building, again, building five, from that location, is about a thousand feet away. More than three football fields. Day one, if that building was built day one with our initial plantings, you'd probably see about half that building. However, over time, it goes away due to the, the growth of the, of the buffers that are there, that we'd be planting close to the property line and in front of the building. Plus, we've lowered the height of that building, so as those trees mature, they don't have to work as hard to screen the building, 'cause it's only forty-five now instead of seventy. And then this is cross-section eight, uh, which is the one that goes from the little gathering area. Again, it's looking through some of the existing screening that screens the yard at the National Cemetery. Day one, you can't see, I mean, unless they tear that down, that's, those trees down, you can't see anything of our site. Even if they did cut them down to the ground, our plantings, just our double row of evergreens that we'll do along the border, will screen our closest building, which is eleven-hundred feet away from that spot. Next cross-section nine, kinda cuts through the corner of our site. We wanted to get a cross-section to building one, which is nine-hundred feet away. There's a more of a wooded area there, that's almost going right down that buffer line that I showed you in the picture before. Again, day one, you won't see anything. And if for some reason, uh, that was cut down completely, you would see the building initially, but as our buffer grows, it, it is totally screened. Then the last cross-section, number ten, is the electrical substation yard. In our grading plan, we were able to depress that area compared to the elevation, uh, of the cemetery. We were able to depress it slightly, and as you can see, from the town substation and most substations, most of the equipment is less than twenty feet tall that's in the yard, your transformers and switch gears. The incoming overhead lines are higher, but we've got those running down East Chandler today. They go all around the National Cemetery, there's quite a bit of overhead equipment that goes around there today. Again, we're no closer with our substation today than the cemetery is on its north side to the town substation. When you cut the cross-section from the higher point, that little gathering area where the funerals start to stage, even with our initial plantings, you'll not see any of the equipment in the electrical substation. And again, as it matures, it just gets better. So appreciate your patience, I know this was a long presentation, but I wanted to get into the weeds a little bit and show you the effects of, you know, these planting buffers, the more accurate cross-sections, and how we've documented it and put it into the proffers, so you have certainty, you have specificity of how this project's gonna look. We can't change those, once those are approved and those proffers are locked in, we can't change those on our own. If we wanted any changes, we'd have to come back to you and town council to change that. So, you know, to summarize, our project's different, we're context-driven by our neighbor. So we're doing stuff different than the Peterson project. Ours is more complicated, ours needs more examination, ours needs more detail. That's why our proffers are a lot more comprehensive and a lot longer. We've gotten great input from planning commission, from staff, and we've listened to the public. And we think we've been responsive. And again, appreciate your patience, and happy to take any questions now or later, as you, as you see fit.
Another question on cross-section five?
Sure.
Uh, I'm having a hard time figuring out, I see there on the inset above the cross-section, the lines for section three, seven, and I think it's six, I should've brought my glasses. Oh, well, never mind. That's, okay. It's the black line, right? The other ones are red, okay. And that's from, is that from downtown, uh, East Chandler Street, East Chandler Street in town? Or East Chandler Street east of town?
That's East Chandler Street, um, just past the intersection of Electric Avenue.
So that's not really, that's, um, over by the power station more or less?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You can't see us from town.
That's what, yeah.
I mean, just, just to give you, go back to one picture.
Thanks, I was wrestling a little bit with that one.
This is from Flagpole Hill, this is looking downtown. You know, that's our giant telecom pole, you know, that's the biggest, the biggest thing in town. Downtown is just to the right of that. You can't see it today from Flagpole Hill. That's the highest spot on the National Cemetery. We're over the hill from them.
Are there other questions for the African at this time? Thank you very much, Mr. Plasko. At this time, I invite other members of the public to approach the podiums, introduce yourselves, speak for up to three minutes, um, offer information pertinent to this application. Somebody dive in.
I'll be the guinea pig.
Beg your pardon?
I said I'll be the guinea pig, first one.
Uh, thank you for the privilege to come before you all this evening. Uh, I'm Jeff Lefler, I'm the president of the Mountain Brook Estates Homeowners Association. So I'm here representing most of the, or all the homeowners in that development. Some of our concerns we have with this proposed, uh, project is, I have a list of them, and I just try and go back down them pretty fast, so I don't take up too much time. We have, uh, concern with one of the things on Kingsbrook Road, which is kind of the main pass-through through our development, uh, regarding traffic. Uh, a little over a year ago, with conjunction with Jim Hoy and the police department, uh, they did a traffic study on Kingsbrook Road of the traffic coming through there. There's ninety-eight homes in our development with three lots owned by the town. During that seven-day period, they counted approximately twenty-two-hundred vehicles coming through there. Now granted, some of them are the residents that come through there.
Twenty-two-hundred, did you say?
Twenty-two-hundred, yes.
In one day?
In seven days.
Seven days.
Oh, yeah, they did a, yeah. So that, that's a real concern to us, because it's, Kingsbrook Road now has become a cut-through to get into the other parts of town. And so we have tractor-trailers come down through there, heavy equipment, you know, industrial things, probably going to Bingham-Taylor, possibly, you know, things going through there. But it's on a daily basis that, uh, you know, this happens. So that's one of our concerns, and, you know, with the development, is that gonna bring more traffic, equipment coming up through there to, you know, to get to the development there? So that's one of our concerns. The next one is the noise level. I live right on Kingsbrook Road and Electric Avenue, right at the corner there. And I don't know exactly, but I'm probably about six-hundred feet from the generator station there. And even though there's a buffer of trees there, I can sit on my deck in the back, which faces right at the generators, and the decibel reading I get, even with all the trees up there and everything, is at least seventy-five decibels from the generator plant when it's running. So that's a real concern, and, you know, looking at the size of the generators that are there, compare the size of the generators that would, are necessary for this development, I think that the noise coming from them may be a big factor. So, you know, that's one of our concerns, too. With the, uh, I know you said that they're, they're reducing the height of the buildings right on Chan, East Chandler Street. But that's, still, it could be fifty-five feet tall. And all their cooling equipment apparently is on the roofs. So I don't know whether that parapet wall, how much is that gonna cut down on noise back into the development? So that's one of our concerns, too. One of the other things is when we're concerned about our property values. So with that, how is, how is that gonna affect our values? And if they should decrease because of this, who's gonna compensate the homeowners for that? So that's something, you know, we're thinking, we'd like to look, look into. Also, and this is not, it's not for sure. Also, and this is not, it's not for sure, but I'm a friend with a group called Culpeper Cemetery Project. And they go around looking for old cemeteries and things. And there's a possibility there's a cemetery up there that dates back to the Civil War. They haven't, they're investigating it, but they're not for sure up there, so just something looked into. Of course, we're all concerned about the National Cemetery and, you know, the noises that would affect that. And so, you know, that's a big thing. And let's see, the other thing? And I just, just the last comment. You know, a lot of homeowners moved in there, especially the ones on Electric Avenue, right next to the generator plant. And there's one home probably not more than two-hundred feet away from that. And they went to the town, I don't know if it was the electric company or something, and asked what could be done maybe to help them quiet the noise down from those generators. And they said they'd look into it, but their final word was, "We were here first." So, you know, that's kind of the way we feel too in our development. We were here first, so. So, but those are the concerns that we have and, you know, things to consider. But I think one of the big things is the traffic coming through there. It's really a lot of traffic, so. But thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for speaking before us and for giving us that perspective.
Sure, okay.
Thank you. What else would you like to, Commander?
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Lori Midley and the commander of the American Legion here in Culpeper. I did submit a letter, but through the email chain, it wasn't signed, so I have the signed copy here now. And this letter does represent the official position of the American Legion of Culpeper. Currently, a hundred and fifty-four members of the American Legion, plus we have the American Legion Auxiliary and the Sons of American Legion, which I don't have their numbers off the top of my head. So this letter does specifically say, while we appreciate the efforts that the Planning Commission and the rezoning applicant has made to shield the cemetery from the noise, light, and viewshed impacts the proposed data center would provide, it will never compare to the environment that residential housing would provide. So that's kind of our bottom line. It'll never be a residential community, whatever you put in this light industrial zone. So rather than read the whole letter, I just wanted to talk a little bit, remind you about who is or who would be buried in that cemetery. Some military veterans are men and women who, for the most part, willingly, willingly answered our nation's call to potentially give their lives and service to our country. They sacrifice the comforts of home and time with their families to go wherever they were needed. Whether it be long deployments to war zones such as Vietnam or Afghanistan, or supporting first responders in situations such as the aftermath of nine-eleven or Hurricane Katrina, military veterans put their life on hold and at risk to do what our country asks. I'm a Marine veteran, so Marines have a saying, "No man left behind." A Marine will further endanger their own life to make sure that they bring a fallen comrade home, home to their final resting place. In the instance of the Culpeper National Cemetery, a resting place where they are surrounded by fellow veterans and their spouses, a place where families can come and reflect on their life together, a place that honors the memory of those presently interned and future veterans and spouses as they go to their final resting places. The sounds of neighboring children playing and lawns being mowed or cows mooing are welcome sounds. The sounds and smells of industrial applications do not reflect a peaceful resting place. As we think about Vietnam veterans returning to the U.S. and how they were treated when they came back, they were spit on, they were yelled at, denigrated. And now as a society, we realize that we did them wrong. And we have this common saying of, "Thank you for your service." You hear that all the time. Let's not get to the point in the future where we say veterans deserve better than being surrounded by industrial complexes at the National Cemetery. Our military veterans have earned the dignity and respect of a final resting place befitting of their honorable service and the sacrifices they have made for our nation. Please ensure that the Culpeper National Cemetery remains that place by denying the rezoning request. And I'll give you the signed copy of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commander. How many, what's the membership in Culpeper, the Legion membership?
Current active veterans' membership is a hundred and fifty-four. And then we also have another, a unit attached to the post, which is called the Sons of the American Legion. I would guess there's about fifty members. And then we have the Auxiliary, which is another organization that's attached to the post. I do not have any idea. I would guess fifty members as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, I am Cindy Burbank. I'm from Warrenton, Virginia. And I'm here because I'm a volunteer with Heroes Bridge. And Heroes Bridge is a nonprofit that supports older veterans. And as a volunteer, I have attended a funeral at the Culpeper National Cemetery and supported older veterans in this community, including a gentleman named Larry Corbin. And Larry could not be here tonight for a variety of reasons, but he has a statement which he asked me to read. I would like to do that. "I am Larry Corbin and I live in Mitchells, Virginia. I'm a Culpeper County resident and I care greatly about this issue. I am ninety-three years old. I fought in the Korean War in the nineteen-fifties." Yeah, the Korean War. "My beloved wife is buried at the Culpeper National Cemetery. I visit her grave there often, almost every day. I will be buried there with her when my time comes. Please do not recommend approval of a massive noisy data center next to the Culpeper National Cemetery. It is a sacred place. It should always be a quiet, peaceful place for those who are buried there. It should always be a quiet, peaceful place for the husbands, wives, children, and friends who go to pay their respects. This site is fundamentally wrong for a data center. If a data center is built there, the town of Culpeper will forever desecrate the Culpeper National Cemetery. It will desecrate it with noise and with the presence of a massive industrial data warehouse. Culpeper already has several data centers or proposed data centers, which will bring plenty of revenue to the town and county. Please don't sell the town's soul out for a data center looming over the graves of veterans." That is from Larry Corbin, and I hope you'll respect his perspective on it. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Burbank, for speaking before us and introducing that letter. Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak?
I know, as if you all hadn't heard enough from me. All right, well, first and foremost, I would like to thank the commission for being so thoughtful on this issue. I know that it has taken up a significant amount of time and much more time than most of your applications. Here before us tonight, on the one hand, we have the comprehensive plan, developed through public process with input from the community. And even though it does not explicitly mention this land use, it is consistent in its expression of the community's desire to maintain the small-town character and tourism-based economy of Culpeper, to honor and protect its history, and to maintain or improve the quality of life for those who live here. On the other hand, we have the Technology Zone Ordinance, which per the developer, has brought this development to this site. Unlike the comprehensive plan, public input was not sought prior to the adoption of this incentive by the Town Council. No hearings were held. This ordinance was passed at the recommendation of town staff and at the discretion of the Town Council. The Culpeper National Cemetery is an important part of the veteran community, including the community beyond Culpeper. The cemetery has also been an important ambassador for the rest of the town, and it is the reason many people come here. Up to twelve-hundred people will visit in December alone to lay wreaths. And the town's treatment of the cemetery environs will not go unnoticed. One of the most important goals expressed in the comprehensive plan is that new developments should enhance and build on existing ones. Allowing heavy industrial use, like this data center campus adjacent to existing neighborhoods, historic districts, and cultural and historic resources will not improve the community. It will only detract from them. Yes, the site will have some vegetative buffers. However, it will take many years, possibly a decade or more, for two-and-a-half-inch caliber trees to reach maturity or thirty-five feet in height. That is a long time in the lifespan of a small business that relies on a small-town charm and tourism for its bread and butter. That is a long time for someone trying to build equity in their home. And that is a long time for the people who will come to the cemetery to pay their respects. Moreover, this project is highly speculative. As the applicants have said, they have never built a data center and their involvement will end after the mass grading is complete. We do not know who the builder or operator will be. We do not know what type of data center. We do not know how this project will impact the local transmission infrastructure. PEC believes that gambling on such a highly speculative industrial project at the expense of existing homes and cultural resources is not beneficial to Culpeper and is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. If the comprehensive plan is out of date, then it should be updated through the public process with public input. The community input that has been made public so far is entirely in opposition to this project. We respectfully ask that the Planning Commission heed the guidance of the comprehensive plan and the feedback you have received from the community and find this rezoning out of compliance and recommend denial. Thank you.
Can you read the last two sentences again, if you don't mind, sir?
Yeah, absolutely. "If the comprehensive plan is out of date, then it should be updated through the public process with public input. The community input that has been made public so far, what I can find on board docs and who has spoken at the hearing so far, is entirely in opposition to this project. We respectfully request that the, that the Planning Commission heed the guidance of the comprehensive plan and the feedback you have received from the community and find this rezoning out of compliance and recommend denial."
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I see many people here and who haven't spoken yet. And I just want to make sure, absolutely sure, before we go back to the applicant, that nobody else wants to take this opportunity to address the commission. Please. Beg your pardon?
I'm Kerry Romesberg. I'm the junior vice commander of the VFW. I'm also on the honor guard, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. I've attended hundreds of funerals at the National Cemetery. I've seen the faces. I've heard the sobs of people who are coming there to celebrate the life of the deceased. They want to see the folding of the flag. They want to hear the rifle volley. They want to hear the playing of taps. And you want to hear the sound of silence. I beg you not to ruin the sanctity of this sacred place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking. Thank you for speaking very much. Are there any questions for the members of the audience who have spoken? I have one, and I'm really embarrassed. I wrote down your organization, but I didn't write down your name.
Lori Midley.
Lori, do you mind coming up one word for just a moment? So you were here last meeting, and it's hard to follow along with all the details. You know, we get kind of good at it. These guys are masters. But you may recall that although the current zoning of that patch of land, of the terrain, of the tracks that we're looking at now is residential, the future land use for it is contemplated as a mixed business or employment center. And I wonder if you are, if you're able to say, or if you have any sense of what the Legion's feelings would be if towards, towards non-residential development that isn't, that goes in that direction, that's some sort of, maybe an office space, commercial space. Is it specifically a sort of a monolithic campus or the noise? I'm sorry. Is it specifically apprehensions about a data center that you feel the Legion is objecting to it? Or is it any non-residential development at all?
In general, it's any non-residential. And I can tell you, I think I mentioned last month when I was here, there was a state, national, all the department of the American Legion throughout the state met at a convention up in Dulles. And people would approach me, "Oh, you're Culpeper. Oh, you got that Dennis data center. What is going on with that? What are you guys doing down there?" And throughout the state, people are.
Completely understand that, but I really want to understand it's, it's any non-residential would be objectionable. Sorry.
That is the specific question that was put before the membership of the American Legion, and that's what they said, "Keep it residential."
Okay, thank you very much. So in response, are there any factual rebuttals that the applicant would like to make or points of information?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you, members of the public, for, for coming out and providing, you know, good comments. I'll do my best to address some of the factual questions. First, Mr. Lefler, you said you had about seven concerns, the first one being traffic. So can I put the exhibit back on just to help?
Couldn't you get a password a little bit longer? I'm on my teeth for that.
All right. All right, let's see. So this is the aerial view, and it shows where Mountain Brook Estates and Kingsbrook, you know, kind of cutting through, there's Electric Avenue. And then they show up our site plan. So for our site plan, we have two vehicular access points. One is up here, and it's just to the east of the National Cemetery. That's going to be a road that's going to service the electrical substations. Very low traffic. It's just Dominion or R E C going in there to service and maintain the substations. Our other main entrance is going to be off of McDevitt. There's an existing curb cut there today, and there's already right-of-way reserve for a road called Green Meadow. And that'll be the main entrance into the project. That's where all the traffic, day-to-day traffic, will go because it's a secured facility. Most data centers are secured facility. We will have perimeter fencing like most data centers. And it's controlled access. You just don't get to drive into a data center. You have to go to a security checkpoint. That's where you'll go in off McDevitt. We do not.
How many employees will you have in the six buildings?
Typical data center, thirty to forty employees, and it's.
I'm sorry. I interrupted, I'm sorry. I'll wait my turn.
Well, no, I just asked how many employees? Because the number of employees is going to have a direct, direct equation to how many, how much traffic is going to be increased.
Absolutely.
I wanted to ask, is that per building or for the whole?
Per building.
Yeah, okay.
So thirty or forty per building, six buildings, you know, potentially, you know, two-hundred, two-hundred and fifty people.
I wanted to clarify, if I'm understanding, Mr. Lefler was talking about traffic as a result of the construction, that people are going to divert to get away from, let's say you're bringing a crane in, earth-moving equipment. Are they going to use his neighborhood as a diversion?
I can't see why they would go through, through Mountain Brook. I mean, if we're bringing in equipment, we're going to come off of twenty-nine, go down three, and come up McDevitt and go into. I mean, if we're bringing in equipment, we're gonna come off of twenty-nine, we'll go down three and come up McDevitt and go into the main entrance. And I can't see much construction traffic on East Chandler, cuz the only way to get East Chandler would be going through downtown or you'd be coming up off Mills Mill and that's not a great way to go. So, I I, there's, I don't see any cut-through traffic impacts for us. And then just from a gross traffic volume, the current zoning is for four hundred and ninety residential units. Average, average daily traffic per residential unit is about ten trips per day. So that's almost five thousand, it's age-restricted community, there's typically a little discount for that. Say it's four thousand a day from a residential development. If we have two hundred and fifty people, people that come to work at data center, it's not in and out where you have a family taking the kids to soccer, going to the grocery, going to work, coming home. It's an employment base, employment, you come to work, maybe you go out to lunch, go home. So, four thousand versus, say, four trips a day, come to work, go home, maybe go out, lunch, come back, a thousand, so it's maybe twenty-five percent impact versus it being residential. And in our plan, all the traffic's coming in the McDevitt entrance. If it's residential, our old plan for residential had two entrances on East Chandler. Guarantee you that a lot of the four thousand trips a day would be on East Chandler. Here, I can't imagine any employees, they're coming in, they have to come in McDevitt. The only people that are gonna come in off East Chandler are the maintenance guys and gals going to the substation and that's very low volume. So, just the facts on traffic volume. As far as the noise levels, in our proffers, we have a specific table that gives us maximum daytime and maximum nighttime decibel levels. Our maximum level during the daytime, measured at our property line, measured at our property line with with Mountain Brook, with our property line with the National Cemetery, is sixty d B A. At nighttime, it goes down to fifty-five. So, if Mr. Loeffler's hearing seventy-five d B today, ours is going to be dramatically quieter, cuz noise is measured on a logarithmic scale, so it's not just a one-to-one ratio, it's dramatically different. As far as this question about cooling on the roof, we haven't designed the buildings yet. We don't know if we will have cooling equipment on the roof or if it'll be in the building. But again, with a sixty and fifty-five d B A noise requirement, we compensate for that in the design, so no matter where we put the equipment, no matter if our emergency generators are inside or outside the buildings, when we do the noise studies as part of the initial design, we have to demonstrate that we're going to meet these limits at the property line. If we can't, we can't build it. As far as property values, I cannot opine on that. As far as the semit- Culpeper Cemetery Project, um if they're out on our property looking for cemeteries, then then they're trespassing, which we don't appreciate, but before we bought the property, we did investigations on historic resources, threatened endangered species in the wetlands. And we know that there's no cemeteries on our site, we know that we don't have any threatened and endangered species on our site. We knew that before we bought it, that's just standard due diligence. So, uh I don't know where that information's coming from, but that's, it's not accurate. There's no listing with the state, uh the state has a database of historic sites, potential sites, and it's not on there. I think those are the only things I can opine on that are factual.
Leska? Oh, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Oh, no, I was gonna try and address the other folks. As far as Commander Medley, um appreciate your com- comments. We don't see this as an industrial complex like a smokestack industry where there's noise and, you know, significant noise and pollution versus like a smokestack type use. It's high technology, it's relatively clean, we do have, you know, use of emergency generators for emergencies. But we, if it was a residential community with four hundred and ninety homes, we'd probably have at least four hundred and ninety cars and, you know, coming out and generating things too. As far as Mr. Corbin's statement, I would just like to say, and I've mentioned before to this group, you know, personally, I've worked on national cemeteries before. I have great respect for it, I have great respect for the veterans, my father was a Korean War veteran, I would not do anything to dishonor him. As far as Ms. Parmally's comments, you know, before, before this area was residential zone back in the early two thousands, it was all zoned industrial. For good reason, you're next to the railroad, easy access to the highway. Times change, comp plans change, but this area has always had a lean towards industrial. And we're not doing more smokestack industries. And as far as comprehensive plan, we also try and balance the needs of the residents with also the economic needs of the community, and you have to have a mixture, you cannot be, we don't wanna be all suburban here, we don't wanna be all residential, we wanna have a town core, we wanna have agriculture, we wanna have industry. And I think the biggest challenge that I've seen in my experience doing this for a long time is we have to put things in the right place, in the appropriate place. We don't want this, we want to put this in the right place where there's infrastructure today, there's electrical infrastructure out there today. There are substate, there is data center infrastructure out there today between SWIFT and Aquinix, it's there. This is an established location for data centers. Virginia has the most data centers on the planet. It is part of our economic plan for the state. There's tons of information. The governor is proponent of data centers, we've been a proponent of data centers. It's our driving industry, so we don't, just to conclude, we are not gambling on this project. Virginia is a data center state and that's, we're not, we're not gambling, we're not taking a risk. And so, all to say that, you know, we're, our design is contextual.
Do you feel like you've responded to the factual points that were raised?
I think so. I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one question for you.
Absolutely.
It's it's a micro question. The, what is the, the, not the um substation, but the data building that uh Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, that's closest to the cemetery, how close is it at its closest point?
Building number one, nine hundred feet. Building number three, eleven hundred. Building number five, nine hundred.
So the noisy, the substation is comparable to the the existing substation? As far as noise and potential disruption, or the visual disruption, the potential for, no?
No, they're gonna have generators behind each one of those buildings. Aren't you?
Potentially, we don't know for sure yet, however,
Outward, outward, inward or outward, I mean, towards the property line or, uh, you know?
No, all the generator yards
Between the buildings, you see that space?
They're on the
That's, but the closest the, the sort of noise generating, generating part and pollution generating part of this campus goes, the closest those, that part gets to the cemetery is about three football fields.
The generators in there, they've been talking about diesel generators.
Right.
That's the noisiest thing you can find is a diesel generator.
Right.
And that's what's gonna make all the noise, and they only come on in emergencies.
Right.
Uh, so you're gonna have a lot of noise from the diesel generators, not from the their uh transfer station, that's not gonna be noisy at all.
That's what I mean, the noisiest parts are gonna be at least three, about three football fields away.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've proffered that even at their noisiest, they're not gonna be noisier than sixty decibels at their property line.
It's otherwise specified. That's what it said in their proffers. That's what concerns me a little bit.
That was just, I thought the hours of, the day and nighttime hours.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, I gotcha.
Alright, okay, that's very helpful and
Yeah, the noise, the noise is measured again at the property lines. The substation will also also be included in the noise study, cuz to Mr. Loeffler's point, they make noise too. It, the, the substation has to meet that. And when we design the substation and if it's emitting more noise than sixty during the day and fifty-five at night, then we have to do sound treatment. There's ways of doing that, you can put up barrier walls. And it's the same with any equipment that goes on the roof, there are ways to mitigate that sound with barriers, enclosures, some of the air handling units.
But that's all kind of speculative right now, cuz you're not in a position to specify what technology you're gonna use, but you did answer my question.
No, but, but what's most important is we're putting specificity on what we're going to design to.
You put a quantified limit on the sound at the at the property line and that's significant and specific. Alright, and thank you. Are there other, are there other questions either for the applicant or for any of our attendees today? Do you have more information to offer? We can't do it back, I'm I'm really sorry, if you wanna inform us, the commission, about something uh that you didn't already inform us about, I I would defer to you for uh two minutes, let's say. But, but we can, it's just not appropriate to do back and forth.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you for understanding, I appreciate that. I have a question for, uh we're we're privileged this evening to have a town attorney represented. And um so various parties have brought to attention various um information from various sources and um I have seen a memo from the Environmental Quality E C A C, E Q A C, Environmental Quality and Advisory Council. And this is uh to, in, uh for a project that was done in Loudoun County. And this goes over my head legally and that's why I wanted to just ask you what you can say about it here off the cuff, extemporaneously. I did see C Martin on a message referring to it earlier today, but I don't know if he had a chance to communicate with you. Yeah, does the D E Q, in this memo, um there's reference to D E Q action that may supersede locality regulation, if I understood it right, and I'm not sure I did. And I wanna understand, is there a way, if the appeal is made to D E Q, I don't understand the process, but do they, is is, do they have the authority, is that authority sometimes exercised to overrule locality regulations? Protecting communities against uh undesirable fallout from data centers.
Okay, and when Martin and I were meeting that this afternoon, what we noticed was that, first of all, the question, D E Q would not supersede the locality ordinance, and that's um, you know, been our understanding of how that would proceed. And also, the ordinance that was interjected was refer- um referring to those diesel generators. Um while right now, we don't really have um that issue as you brought up, you know, it's all speculative at this juncture, so we're just looking at the noise in general, so we didn't feel that it would be applicable to the situation that's before you guys right now. And so we would, that's what we just opined off the cuff.
Great answer, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other, and I I was trying to address the speci- uh otherwise specified clause.
I understand.
Okay. Any other questions for the department, for the, uh, attorney?
Just a question, have we closed the public meeting?
We haven't, no. If there are no other comments from the public, public meeting's not closed. Uh are there the questions for the attorney of the department, Mr. Mitchell?
I do have questions for the director, possibly counsel. We talk about decibels uh in in sound there, um frequency comes to mind. I'm gonna pick on a character that I call rolling thumper. This is a guy in a tricked-out suburban, rolls back and forth along uh Main Street multiple times a day. He's putting about sixty-five, sixty-seven decibels out, but the vibrations can be felt in the back of the building, rattle glass and the light. As I understand, there's nothing to stop those low-frequency vibrations in our code. His decibels are within reason, uh at least as I'm measuring them, but it's the frequency. Does that also apply here, that for the sake of argument, if they have a fan blade that's wobbling and making vibrations that can be either felt or you're in the lower end of the spectrum, they're not showing up as a decibel, but they are disturbing the neighborhood, is that enforceable?
It is in that this is in the M-two zoning district, is is what they're proposing to rezonate to. The M-two zoning district has specific noise regulations that are based on not only the decibels, but the frequency band for it. So that's another precaution that's in place.
With the frequency constraint?
Uh there are different bands and and sort of depending on the band, there are different decibel levels. So for frequency band twenty to seventy-five, there's a sound pressure level decibel seventy-four limit. For seventy-six to one fifty, it's at eighty-two, for one fifty-one to three hundred, it's at fifty-seven, it's a table, it's in here. Now, my understanding is from an enforceability perspective, that does become very, very difficult to to track and to enforce. So I think um the the proffers and and the other components of chapter thirteen are going to be much easier for us to do and what we're probably gonna be primarily looking at in the noise study, but this is something that we can look to try and ensure is addressed within that noise study as well.
There would, in theory, could be in an M-two district, uh the rezoning, there would be enforcement for those frequencies by code that already exist.
Lowest decibel level in that table you just read?
Uh it drops down for frequency bands forty-eight hundred to ten thousand to thirty-five decibels. This is in section twenty-seven dash sixty-two of the town code, which are the the standards for the the M-two district.
Alright.
Question, um that Sarah brought up, uh comp plan disagreements and said specifically that the tech overlay didn't have a public hearing and is out of step with what's envisioned there. Do you have any comments on that as a director or any light you can shed on that?
Certainly, um state code requires amendments to the town subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance to go through a public hearing process before both the planning commission and the town council. Ordinance amendments to other chapters of the town code don't have those same stipulations. Town council uh went through a, um they did hold a, advertised it at a public meeting and did a first reading of it to the public. They opted to waive the second reading of it, which is permissible uh by town code, and so adopted at that time. So it was advertised within the the context of the town council meeting and was was able to be spoken to at that meeting, but they did not hold a formal public hearing on it. And then I think you had also asked about relative to the comprehensive plan. It's one where this application has strengths and weaknesses in relation to the comprehensive plan. Some of what is is discussed within the comprehensive plan does overlap with the technologies, and there are other portions of it that that contribute with it. But it's council's prerogative to to adopt those provisions and those Um, but it's council's prerogative to, to adopt those provisions and those ordinances that they see best for the town. Sorry, if I may also add one other thing. The other thing to bear in mind is that this is adopted as a tax incentive. While it does have zone in it, it is not related to zoning per se. It's a tax incentive within the town.
What do we do next? In a situation like this?
You're looking at me to make a motion?
I mean, we're gonna vote it up or down, uh, but it needs to be, the motion needs to be placed before we can act, so. If there are no more questions, I think that's the next step.
Throw another question, it seems to be what I do. Um, under exemptions, emergency equipment operations anytime of day or night during an area-wide power outage or power shortage. Power shortage, and this is where I wish that Mr. Flanagan's voice wasn't squelched, uh, 'cause he could bring an expertise to this. Power shortage, to me, is ambiguous, um, that we're in the peak shaving business in the town, where we run our generators to bring down the, um, amount of electricity we're buying and keep the rate, you know, in line for all of the users. And power shortage, you know, is that a proverbial brownout? That they could run it, um, you know, for a week, a month? Um, how long that it's economical to keep it up running those systems on diesel? It's just something to be aware of. Um, I guess when I looked at it, uh, I lived near Spring Street, and Spring Street had, um, the generators that Mike Stover was great and got me some wonderful information about how the town got electric coverage, starting in nineteen thirteen through the thirties and forties. And when we moved in, um, we had the generator that was running from nineteen forty-one. We heard that several, uh, you know, a block away and down a hill by a couple hundred feet. We smelled it as well. Uh, we were grateful in twenty oh five, when they pulled them all out of there. Uh, it was a wonderful change to our backyard, to not hear that humming or to have the wafting diesel aromas. So when I look at that, you know, and saying, why power outage or power shortage? That's open-ended. I guess that's what I'm saying, I've, that, um, you know, or that will the end user be looking at this and saying that, um, they always need to have power, that their requirements, let's say it's North of Grumman. North of Grumman says, "You must a hundred percent of the time, not ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine, but one hundred percent of the time provide power." If that's what the end user demands, those generators will be on, um, and, you know, for who knows how long. I guess that's one of the concerns I have, that I, again, wish Mr. Flanagan wasn't squelched.
Can he talk? I mean, uh, he, he's not voting.
Permission to respond?
Yes, of course.
Um, he is not able to partake in deliberations, because if he was to say something that would impact the voting, then it would almost have the same effect as if he was to cast a vote. So I think it's a cleaner, you know, cause of action if he just was not to, you know, participate in his deliberation.
Also, one thing, you keep saying diesel generator. I wish you'd stop using that term. There's, uh, a lot of ways you can produce electricity without diesel. And diesel's the smell, the noise, and all the problems you identify. Also, it's the most expensive way. Uh, but you could produce, uh, uh, electricity other ways.
Agreed. But you are taking into account the, that you're thinking conservatively, the worst possible case.
And that's what I'm seeing in, in some of the information that I'm hearing about, is that there's other communities that have a more resplendent sources of power, and they're seeing it as a last resort to go to diesel. You'll remember that, uh, Second Bank of Trust had the Kohler Diesel in the alley there.
But again, don't use diesel.
As a.
Diesel's an old-fashioned way of producing electricity. Uh, you can use a, a turbine. Uh, you can use, uh, hydrogen fuel cells. Uh, you can use solar power.
Okay.
So, uh, diesel.
What does it say, generator?
Yeah, a generator's better, better, yeah, absolutely. Because it's gonna give them the idea, they could come, come on in with a diesel. Now, wait a minute, we don't want that.
So, Mr. Mitchell, I know your question was for the director, um, but I, do you mind if I, um, I recall Mr. Plesky emphasizing that even if they're running the diesels, the conditions at the, at the property line are unvarying, so they're still, they have to demonstrate that they can run that diesel, if they're playing nice, uh, at under sixty decibels at the property line. And if not, then, uh, they're subject to, uh, penalty or injunction, you know? Avenues of relief for the township.
What is it, a penalty, if they violate the noise, uh, ordinance?
Five hundred dollars. Uh, let me, this, I looked it up, and I think it said five, uh, five hundred dollars per incident.
Per incident? Okay, so.
Uh, the noise ordinance violation is a class-three misdemeanor.
Okay.
Five hundred dollars. I think it's five hundred dollars, if you dig deeper.
It, it, maybe in here.
I, I got to the class-three misdemeanor, and it led me to a five hundred dollar output. Uh, but there's also.
I believe he, he reads a lot.
There's also legislative, uh, relief, you know, you, uh, they can sue to stop operation.
Oh, okay, okay. So they can be shut down if they exceed, okay.
Right. Lot to think about. I know we've all been thinking about this a lot for the last, you know, several months, actually. Um, if we aren't about this evening, uh, one way or the other, a motion has to be placed.
Before, um, we get to that, um, just, just for the benefit of the folks here, and just so people understand, I think everybody understands what the rezoning looks like. If this property weren't rezoned, can you, or if it were rezoned and something else could go on this property, could you just let people know what the possible uses are, so that they can get an idea of what we're talking about?
Sure.
Being next to the cemetery?
Well, the current, um, entitlement on the property was a rezoning that took place in the mid-two thousands for an age-restricted residential development. Uh, as the applicant noted, it's approved for four-hundred-and-ninety units. That's a mix of, of single-family detached, attached, um, and some other creative, uh, units. I don't think there were apartments in there, if there.
Condominiums.
Some condominiums in there. Um, so a mix of different housing types, but they were age-restricted. Um, the approval of that had a buffer against the National Cemetery of ten feet. Um, so the backyards would have been within fifteen, yeah, ten, would have been ten, essentially offset ten feet from the National Cemetery. Um, as the applicant noted, the, the entrances for that property were primarily on East Chandler. Um, and again, looking at the, the vehicle trip distribution of that, you'd probably be looking at approximately four thousand vehicle trips per day on East Chandler Street, headed both into town and out of town.
Would that require a widening of East Chandler?
We would have to examine that at the site plan stage. Uh, my anticipation is probably not a widening of it. Um, we probably would need turn lanes, uh, at the entrances to the site, things of that nature. The concern would be the, from a safety perspective, the at-grade railroad crossing at East, on East Chandler itself. Um, it's not a, not something that you really wanna see an increase of, of vehicular traffic going in, through an at-grade, um, crossing. The other alternative would be for them to go through, um, the Mountain Brook subdivision down Kingsbrook. But again, it's le, if getting into town, it's another at-grade crossing on, on, on East Spencer Street, um, that they'd be going through in that instance as well. Um, looking at the comprehensive plan again, as, as described, what was contemplated here was, um, essentially a, a employment center use. Um, it talked about a, a mix of office, uh, walkable communities here, a mix of office, some residential in there. Um, in looking at, at, at the prior rezoning that took place, I, I think that puts a bit of a dampener on the, the viable prospects for really any sorts of residential development on this property. Um, that one does have approvals to go up a whole lot closer to the property line than this one does relative to the residential development, um, that it is proximate to. So, again, ultimately, the owners could come in and request anything, um, on that property to be contemplated by the planning commission and town council to be developed. Um, and whatever was proposed, if it were not to be this, would be evaluated on its, on its merit. But, you know, if this were to be denied, what would remain in place was that provision to be able to construct the four-hundred-and-ninety, um, homes on that site.
Um, I have a question for the parliamentarian. It's a little technical, so you might have to reach out.
I'm reaching around, yeah, I see Roberts.
We have the reference manual here, and we have a, a very good reference. Um, if, uh, the, if a motion is placed before the commission and seconded, and then we have a period of discussion, is it possible for us at that point not to vote, or are we constrained to vote?
I believe we have to vote. Somebody could withdraw the motion, uh, that we could have discussion, and then they, they could say, "I withdraw the motion." That it could be clear from the discussion that it wasn't going in the right direction, or would require too many changes, so.
Is it true that somebody, um, doesn't have to vote, even though the motion is on the floor?
They can abstain.
Yeah.
And if the motion, um, is, uh, not to recommend, that means that, that it can't be voted on again for another year, this, that the same proposal can't be voted on for another year. Is that correct? For a period of a year? Do you know about that, Henry?
Uh, y- i- if town council were to deny an, an application, the applicant could not submit substantially the same.
But that happens at the council level, not at the commission?
Correct.
Ours is just a recommendation, isn't it?
Correct.
So no matter what we decide, town council can do whatever they.
Correct, right, good point, good, okay, very good.
Also, we're only gonna have four members, so it's very possible we could have a tie.
If we have a two-two vote, uh, Mr. Parliamentarian, what's the outcome?
Well, I can answer that real quick. It fails.
That's on a, that's on a site, that's on a site plan, isn't it? I thought for a recommendation, it's a different.
That's Roberts' Rules of Order. If you have a tie, that me, that means the motion does not pass.
You concur?
Yes.
Okay.
Concur.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
You just got a little.
Our lawyer was telling us.
My bad, my bad.
But if we do vote on it, and it's a tie, and it doesn't pass, it still moves forward to council, just without any recommendation from this.
Well, actually, I think we probably yet need another motion to say, move it forward without a recommendation.
That's what I was trying to get, close forward without recommendation. That the fail doesn't mean it's a, uh, it doesn't mean we're recommending to disapprove. It just means we're not making a recommendation. That's the, that's the, that's the practical effect of the fail.
More likely.
On a two-two vote.
Given what's just been discussed, and the, you know, way my gut feels about this whole thing, um, I will put a motion on the floor that we move this forward with no recommendation. That we pass this, if you will, to the council to make the decision, who is ultimately going to make the decision. We have been through this. Um, we're learning an incredible amount of volume on it, and I don't think we're the authorities that could know everything on this. But if we're gonna potentially deadlock on it anyway, I think.
You don't know that until they vote.
Well, that was my motion.
Is that an option available to the commission to, to vote?
No, I, I, I would say that the commission needs to, to look to act on, on an application, and if it results in there being, uh, no recommendation, then so be it.
That's the outcome.
But, but there needs to be.
We had done that before, uh, where, uh, Mr. Flanagan had brought up the idea and said that, uh, we opted not to comment on something, so we've set forward it with no recommendation.
That was a Board of Zoning Appeals variance application, where there was no obligation for the planning commission to act.
Right.
It was being offered as a, a courtesy, where there was the option to provide a recommendation, but there was not the expectation or requirement.
Right.
Draw the attempt at an emotion, a, uh, motion.
Withdraw anyway, nobody seconded it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if there's no motion.
Let me make a motion. On REZ thirty-nine fifty-seven dash twenty fifty-three, uh, I'd like to recommend that, uh, we send this to the town council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, we'll have a little discussion, and, um, I usually try to go last on these. I'm gonna assert the chair, the prerogative of the chair, and make a couple of comments first. Um, uh, and I wanna start by just repeating what I've said here before. What we all know really is that our responsibility in this body is to promote town welfare, hey, health, safety, and convenience. Uh, and, um, breaking that large-scale, uh, goal down, uh, we do that by interpreting the comprehensive plan as it applies to this application, or any application that comes before us. And we have to think in the long term and think about all contingencies. And, um, I have only the highest, uh, the greatest admiration for the way this application has been put before us. I think the applicant has been thoughtful, uh, sensitive, really adaptive in it, uh, in, in his responses. Um, I think, you know, a fine example of that is a proffer to reduce the height of the phase-three buildings that are closest to the, um, cemetery and the residential areas. Um, but, uh, our decision has to be made, not only on the application as its proffer, but on its merits, allowing for worst possible outcomes, uh, on its merits as an appropriate rezoning, appropriate use of this land. It's a land use decision. And, uh, we've all thought about this a lot. I really struggled with it, and I've wrestled with it. Um, I, uh, you know, consulted my conscience. I really tried to think about the town, the, the wealth, you know, the town's sort of, um, future as a whole. Um, and my conclusion is that this, uh, application, uh, is that it's, is not consistent with the comprehensive plan in its current form. And my basis for saying that, uh, is, uh, multi-pronged. One is, um, the department memo recommending approval. Uh, that memo itself points out, uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Department does not make a recommendation on these applications.
Misconstrued, I beg your pardon. Thank you, Mr. Director. The report, uh, from the department noted that there is a, um, uh, that the mixed-use business district characteristics, uh, which apply to the, uh, the, uh, growth zone three, are not consistent with an M-two classification. And I'll just quote an excerpt from the mis, the business district description. Says here, "Mixed bus," and, and this is just an excerpt, there's more along this line in the comprehensive plan. Mixed business, uh, used business districts are suburban auto-accommodating districts for retail and office uses. These districts should combine retail, office, civic, limited residential, and open spaces into cohesive blocks based on a grid of intersecting perpendicular street pattern. Emphasis should be placed on pedestrian experience. Uh, we should discourage, for example, single, um, building developments. So this is just a sample from the text that character, in the comprehensive plan, that characterizes mixed-business district. Obviously, very, very far removed from what we're kind of playing with, uh, with a data center. Um, um, there are also, um, several objective, uh, objectives in the comprehensive plan. The report, I, the department report identifies some that are in agreement with this, uh, uh, development. But there are some that I feel that are, uh, not harmonious with this development. For example, the objective to protect, uh, protect historic areas and landmark integrity. Uh, the objective to enhance key gateways and corridors. The objective to balance land use and promote mixed-use land development. Um, to protect natural resources, including air and water quality, to mark the positive assets of the town, to include tourism. To coordinate and participate in regional health, uh, efforts to promote, uh, public health. So, it's not improper to have, uh, one data center, uh, one tract of land assigned to data center, um, development. But the emphasis here is on mixed, uh, mixed, um, business use, mixed employment use. But the emphasis here is on mixed, uh, mixed, um, business use, mixed employment use. And my feeling is, uh, what comes through most clearly from the objectives as they're written and from the character, uh, the characterization of this district, is that at the time, the, the current plan, you know, the plan in its current form was drafted, nobody even considered a data center type development for this attractive land. And, um, so that doesn't make the application necessarily wrong, uh, but it's, it's not, it wasn't part of the thinking at that time. And, um, uh, the, the, it, it might be argued that by designating this area tech zone, the town council has acted in a way that makes it appropriate, that overrules, uh, or might contend with the comprehensive plan. But as I think Andrew just explained, the zoning, uh, the ordinance creating a tech zone has no bearing on the comprehensive plan. It's not an amendment to the comprehensive plan. It's a tax incentive ordinance. Um, it was passed three days before Christmas with no public hearing or review. It was not a campaign issue. It was not an issue that, uh, members campaigned on. So there's no real public mandate for that. And I think it can be reasonably construed as an opportunistic maneuver to keep open the option of coordinating development with the county on an ad hoc basis. And I don't say that in a pejorative way, an opportunistic maneuver. It's good administration, good administrative practice. But there's no bearing on our decision, which has to be guided by the comprehensive plan. Um, another way to look at this is sort of risk versus opportunity. Um, I see some risks inherent in the question of power supply. Is reliability going to be adequate? I've now seen some, uh, third-party, uh, discussion in the news about, um, the potential impact on ratepayers of increasing concentrated increasing demand specifically by data centers in Northern Virginia. Um, uh, we are, as at the federal level, we're somewhat, uh, we're now committing to a carbon zero in, uh, industry in about thirty years. Storage efficiency is developing rapidly. What happens if this, uh, of, a project on this scale becomes financially unsupportable in fifteen or twenty years? Um, then we have these massive facilities that are going to be there. I don't know, are we going to make supermarket, uh, you know, uh, shopping malls out of them? They'll be, uh, irremovable. The town will live with them for a long time. And, uh, in addition, if we, the town becomes very addicted to the revenue from these centers, that revenue, source of revenue becomes, dries up, um, or ceases to flow because of economic, uh, because in the worst-case scenario, uh, the project becomes economically in, um, non-viable. Um, uh, the town will have to go back to, uh, the, the residents and jack up real estate taxes, increase, um, personal property taxes, and I think that will be a wrenching experience. Again, worst-case scenario, I'm not trying to scare anybody that this is the likely outcome, but we have to consider all the, um, the, uh, the alternatives. And the opportunities, those are some of the risks. One of the opportunity, the opportunity is, uh, an unknown revenue stream. We really don't know how much is going to come in. We already, uh, have the prospect of one generous revenue stream coming in, um, from this kind of development. Prudent economic development diversifies the sources of revenue. Um, and it's not clear what the, what the administrative program is that the revenues from a second data center would be committed to. Um, so another consideration is that the zoning statute and the comprehensive plan are both up for review. Uh, the zoning statute is under review. The comprehensive plan is going to be reviewed soon. That's a great opportunity, I feel, uh, for, uh, the government to reformulate the comprehensive plan, if that's appropriate, to consider the pros and cons, the risks and opportunities, um, of a project like this. Maybe it is the right thing to do. My feeling is that we don't really understand all the issues, including even, uh, the noise issue because of the frequency, uh, as mentioned by Jeffrey, also mentioned in a news reportage by WUSA nine in April. Um, for those reasons, I think the best path is, is to not act in haste on a, on a project of this consequence, but to use the processes underway of comp plan review, zoning review, to grind finely, to think this through more carefully, and, uh, really be sure that we're not making a gamble, that we're not taking a disproportionate risk, but that we are acting in the town's best interest. Thanks for your patience with me as I spoke in at such length.
Yeah, I'd say so. Had a difficult time making a decision which way to go. Uh, a lot of people, um, made some good arguments and, uh, I trust them. First of all, on the comprehensive plan, that's a, a plan that is always under development. Am I not wrong? During the years, uh, we have a five-year to review it, but during those five years, I'm sure you're looking at different places in there. Well, this needs a change, this needs a change. Is that not true?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan is intended to be a living document that evolves over time.
So just because it's not in the comprehensive plan doesn't mean that it shouldn't be or won't be. Okay? Now, uh, also, as far, uh, I've found the, uh, problem is, uh, the cemetery, the National Cemetery. And, uh, I'm a veteran. My wife is buried at the National Cemetery in section eleven, which actually will view these buildings. Um, and, uh, I think that the cemetery will be, uh, uh, better suited having about nine hundred feet of space between the, the line and where the building is with a green buffer than it would be to have, uh, houses ten feet away from that line. I don't think that would be a very, uh, very good for the cemetery. I think it, uh, it'd distract, uh, a lot more, especially if people are on their back deck playing music or having barbecue or whatever. But, uh, and, uh, keep in mind, this is, uh, we're only looking at a zoning change. We will see, uh, a site plan. And if that site plan has any word called diesel on it, you got one person who's not going to like it. Uh, but because diesel makes a lot of noise and pollutes a lot. That's all I have. I don't talk as long as you do.
Thank goodness for that.
I mean, you said some of what, of what I was going to say about the, the comprehensive plan being sort of a living, moving document. And, and yet, if it gets, it's, it's under, you know, constant review, but every five years is, is the obligatory big look at the whole big picture. And if something doesn't fall right at that five-year window for us to change it, say, oh, well, this is happening right now. Let's change this right now. This, the opportunity is here now for this. And, uh, I too, you know, have very, have struggled with, with the decision on this and, and obviously hearing from so many people, um, and wanting to respect, uh, what their wishes are. Um, and it's, you know, in my time on the planning commission now and before, I can't think of another time where we've talked more about a particular issue than this one, except maybe the Copper Ridge thing the first time when it was rezoned for the, uh, the four hundred and ninety houses. Um, that, um, again, we can, we can think of worst-case scenarios. We can plan for all the what-ifs and, and, um, we're never going to get it all right. We're never going to know that the next time the housing market's going to crash and maybe we've built four hundred and ninety houses and they're all going to sit bacon and everybody's property values are going to drop. I mean, that happen. Um, data centers right now, I think, uh, are sort of the, the future. They're going all around us. They're going everywhere. Um, and I think the applicant here, again, in all my time on, on the commission, has, um, done just about everything they can to respond to, uh, people's wishes, people's requests, our requests, thought out of the box a little bit, have provided us with a great amount of detail. And if a housing development had a buffer around it like this, it would be amazing. You'll never see that ever. We will never see that. Um, traffic doesn't worry me with this, uh, as far as, you know, public safety goes. Um, you know, because I don't feel like there, there will be a whole lot of, a whole lot of traffic added to this. Um, and I, I, uh, I forgot what I was going to say. I had another, another point that I, that might come to me again later, but, um, I do respect what everybody has said and, and I've certainly not taken anyone's opinions or comments lightly. Uh, I don't dismiss anything that, that anybody's said. And I know everybody has put, um, an awful lot of thought and an awful lot of time into this, um, and people that, that live in the surrounding areas. So I do appreciate that. But, um, I think, um, hoping, I, I think this might be a really good, good use for this, for this particular piece of property at this time.
I guess I'm last. I, um, you know, I also thank the applicant. We've never had somebody so responsive, uh, to comments and, uh, adapting the site to work from removing buildings to reducing buildings to increasing the vegetative, uh, to reducing the sounds. There's been a, a long lineage of things that you have adapted to meet the needs of the public. Um, I hear the veterans, um, and having visited the site, um, you know, you can feel the sanctity of that location. And having that additional buffer is attractive, you know, to see down to where the cows are in the mud, uh, is basically a sightline reference about where that is. Um, it, it's compelling in that regard. Um, by the same token, about the time this came before us, I'd had, uh, the opportunity to go and bicycle a W O and D trail in Loudon and see what these sites look like, um, when they're not protected, and what they sound like, uh, and how they changed a trail that I knew, um, fifteen years ago, uh, when I was in the tech industry. I was longer than that, twenty-plus years ago when I was in the tech industry. Um, I certainly don't want to see that coming to Culpeper. I can see the economic benefit, uh, to some level, but when you match it to the comp plan, um, I like the idea of a village concept there with some sort of, you know, shuttle, uh, light rail or something that connects that to downtown so much more than what this offers. Um, it's been hard. I've, I've walked both sides of this one and, uh, I just don't feel I see it clearly. Um, I'll just leave it at that.
If there's no more discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. If a two-two tie, the motion fails, um, the action goes to the council without recommendation.
Let's do this right.
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion on RE-
Oh, uh-oh. I did it wrong.
I'd like to make the motion on REZ thirty-nine fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, that we send, uh, this to the town council with no recommendation.
That's just an outcome. I, I'm sorry. I don't want to be disputatious. Somebody on-
Essentially, what we'll rec, what we'll report is that there was the motion and the motion failed, so it's coming to council with no recommendation.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Sorry, Ian, you were right.
Actually, the discussion's making the motion to move with the no recommendation before.
It'd be no pleasure to be right at your expense, Mr. Serian. Um, all right, is there any other, uh, let's see, other business before the commission?
Uh, there's no other business.
Any follow-up items?
Uh, no follow-up items.
Um, Mr. Planning Director, do you have any updates for the commission?
Uh, two updates related to staffing. Uh, please be patient. Ms. Purrier, as you can see, is, is out of the office for this month. She should be back in early September. Um, the other one is that I regret to inform the commission that Mr. Costello has handed in his notice. Uh, next Friday is going to be his last day. Um, he has a tremendous opportunity. He's accepted a position as the Deputy Director of Planning for the town of Nag's Head in North Carolina.
Oh, my goodness.
So.
You need somebody to carry his bags.
Good job.
But you need like three or four people to replace, to bridge while Sange is away, right?
So we are, yeah, we are doing our best to keep our heads above water at the moment, but, uh, there's a lot going on.
Well, heartfelt congratulations to Mr. Costello.
Yeah, geez.
Motion for adjournment?
Um, commission members' discussion, none.
Motion for adjournment.
Thank you all.